For this country. All right, thank you. All right, so first up, we have adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, okay, so Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, we've already had the motions and the seconds, and we should have had the public, so as we go down this list, all we need to do is the initial vote, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So we'll just go, um, item by item, uh, with the exception of the, I don't know, item number six, which is the conditional use permit, um, and Brett has drafted up the order for the CEP, so I'll have that on the screen for that, shake your item, but for the first two items, uh, just be a vote on each of those. We did not receive any additional public comment in the twenty-four hour period or after that period, um, from the meeting on Monday. So there's no additional comment to consider on those items.
Okay, so on item number four, the vote on the text amendment to modify parking, excuse me, in our Kedala uses for veterinary hospital in the B twenty zoning district, all in favor?
Aye.
Cause Zach, I can't see everybody, so I don't know.
Yep, and just to, uh, and to help Sherry out as well, since I know she can't see everybody on her side, uh, it looks like, it's like, if I'm correct, everybody was voting in favor of that item?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, uh, this is Brett DeSels, what I would suggest, um, is if everybody would state their name and their, their vote. I think the statute envisions that, um, kind of a roll call vote on matters like this when we're doing it electronically.
All right, uh, Don?
Yes.
If you would, just, we'll start with you and, uh, just state your name and your vote.
Don Miller, vote is yes.
Uh, Jim? I couldn't hear you.
Jim Nailitz, yes.
Okay, uh, Steve?
Steve Martin, yes.
Jeff?
Waters, yes.
And Mike?
King, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, now on item number five, which is the vote on the aisle pet commercial site plan. And we'll just start, once again, I'll just start with Don.
Don Miller, yes.
Uh, Jim?
Don Miller, yes.
Okay.
Nailitz, yes.
Uh, Steve?
Steve Martin, yes.
Uh, Jeff?
Waters, yes.
And Mike?
King, yes.
All right, carries, thank you, gentlemen. And did you say on item number, the next item, we had a, something different? Zach?
Yes, yeah, I've got that on the screen. It's the order approving the conditional use permit application, um, for third eye holdings LLC for the operation of a pet boarding grooming and day camp business in the B twenty commercial zoning districts. Looking at one ten Gulf and Dolphin Drive, so this was in the packet, uh, yesterday, but also on the screen. And it just has this finding, there's, uh, four findings of facts that were reached at the board meeting on, uh, Monday. I guess more than four, five, six, so, uh, six findings of facts and then the conclusion and decision. And I would say for this one, and Brett, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe have somebody make a motion to approve?
That's correct, because, um, there was no motion to approve this order at the last meeting, so we need a motion, a second. Any discussion? If there are discussion, then a vote here, roll call.
Okay, ten forward. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, King.
And a second?
Second.
All right, well, we'll just start back again with you, Don. Uh, all in favor?
Don Miller, yes.
Okay.
Nailitz, yes.
Okay.
Steve Martin, yes.
Waters, yes.
King, yes.
All right, motion approved. Okay, and next up? Hang on, my pad cut off. Are we on six?
Uh, I think this is seven, yeah.
We're on seven now? Okay, so, okay, so the vote on the flood damage prevention ordinance, uh, here again, we just need to, we... Are we on the draft?
Yeah, yeah.
The animal house?
Yeah, yeah.
Number six?
Yeah, yeah, we're on, no, no, we're, so I think we just did six, we're on seven, you're correct, and then that's just, uh,
Number six.
It's like those other ones, yeah, and that's the flood damage prevention ordinance.
Okay, so I'm confused. Hang on just a second. So, so six, we just did, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so seven, vote on the flood damage, and just like the previous ones, we've already done the, uh, the motion and the second, and we, did we have any public comment come in?
Yeah, we, and we didn't, didn't receive any public comment.
Okay, so now it's just, uh, uh, all in favor, so once again, gentlemen, just state your name and your vote. Uh, Don, start with you.
Don Miller, yes.
Mayor?
Hold on, hold on, Mike, did you have a comment?
I had one, just one discussion comment, uh, that didn't come out in the last meeting, and that was, uh, to Zach, and does the, uh, two feet above floodplain elevation, is that handled separately in our ordinance? It's not within this part of it, is that correct?
No, that's, that's a part of the flood damage prevention ordinance. There's still, so we're staying with the same two foot free board requirement. Uh, you can go up to four feet, um, is what the state says, but we're staying at the two feet, just like it is now.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, then we'll, uh, ask again, all in favor, and we'll start with Don, stationing your vote.
Don Miller, yes.
Jim Nailitz, yes.
Steve Martin, yes.
Jeff Waters, yes.
King, yes.
Ten four, all right, and moving on to item number eight, the selection of contractor to pave one oh three Manatee Street. Zach?
All right, got that on the screen now. All right, the town of Cape Carteret recently solicited quotes for paving the town-owned gravel parking lot located at one oh three Manatee Street in Cape Carteret. The following quotes were received, a quote from Onslow Grading and Paving in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred nine dollars, Trip Brothers in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-five cents, and East Carolina Builders in the amount of eight thousand and twenty dollars. Based on the proposal submitted, and in consultation with our Public Works Department, staff recommends selecting East Carolina Builders to pave the town-owned parking lot located at one oh three Manatee Street, and the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider selecting East Carolina Builders as the contractor to complete the paving project at one oh three Manatee Street in Cape Carteret, and to authorize the town manager in consultation with the town attorney to enter into this contract.
All right, gentlemen, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt, uh, contractor, East Carolina Builders.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, well, all in favor, we'll do this again, everybody just state your name and your vote.
Any discussion?
Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, Mike, I just caught myself. Any discussion on that?
I have some.
I do also, after Mike.
Okay, uh, my, uh, two questions. Uh, one, I don't, I remember Trip Brothers did some work for us. Uh, has East Carolina Builders done any, uh, paving work for us, Zach?
Yes, they have. They did the Star Hill Drive Culver replacement project, and then the additional paving.
Okay, 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 all right. Uh, second question, are you entertaining thoughts? You showed in the, um, in the diagram, the sidewalks around that, and I, I want to have discussion on that before we do the paving. Um, and do you want to, you want to hear that discussion now? And, and the reason I say now is, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, either now or when we get to that next item. Um, I know that we had talked about the location of the sidewalk, and it might, it might actually be better to do the sidewalk on both sides of the parking lot. That way, when people get out of their cars, they can walk on the sidewalk, be able to get to the community park, um, and then also to be able to get to the ATM once it's put in place, uh, that was the alternate, uh, kind of solution, which would be to go on both sides of the sidewalk, and then we'll do all the striping and everything else to, uh, to get those spaces in there.
Okay, my discussion was, you know, on the, on the ATM, is that going to be serviced from the parking lot side or the other side?
It'll be, it's pretty much, it's self-contained within the, within the unit, but I think there's a, I think the access door would be on the back side, I believe.
On the, uh, uh, south side?
Yes, on the south side.
Okay, well, that, and so the sidewalk would be there, then, the one on the south side?
Yes, yeah, on the back side of the ATM.
Yeah, you know, when originally we talked to this, I wasn't considering the ATM and preferred the, only a sidewalk on the north side, because that would be easier for the people to get to the businesses and also to the town hall, and to get to the, uh, um, the park area where we have, they could just walk down the little road in back of the town hall, and it would save a lot of sidewalk that way. But if the ATM is on that side, and it's going to be serviced from the south side, I can understand the sidewalk. So I, I could live with a sidewalk on both sides of that. Um, also, there, there was an issue, and I briefly talked to you this around the stormwater pond, I'm going to leave that to you. This Frank Braxton, you might know him from Wilmington, was the stormwater guy that did that, and this was many, many years ago. And that parking lot's been used for what, eight, seven or eight years now? So I, I'll just leave that decision whether we need a stormwater pond for that parking lot, uh, up to you in the application process. Uh, the final thing that I had, would want to say is, um, I'm not so supportive of all the sidewalks running down through our park. Um, it's, it's not a big issue with me, but, uh, I just wonder why we're covering nice green grass with sidewalk, um, when we'll probably be using it a limited time, times during, during a year. Uh, that's all the comments I have on it.
All right, Steve, did you have some comments?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to make, uh, one short, uh, comment here. Um, uh, my feelings on this project is, is, it's another step in the right direction, uh, toward the beautification and, uh, modernization of our town property, number one. And number two, it is all, it seems to me it's also a start to, uh, completing a number of ongoing projects that our town has. And, and that's all the comment I wanted to make. Um, I think Zach has a blank slate here and has something in mind, and, uh, I think, you know, I'm fine with whatever, uh, he comes up with as far as his, uh, sidewalks, uh, I have no problem with putting him in the grass, uh, leading up to the stage like he has it in the diagram, but, um, that's all I have to say.
All right, anybody else have any comments?
I have a question concerning the easement across the property, is that, is that correct? Zach?
Yes, um, for the parking lot, and I have talked with Paxton about that, about, uh, that line running through there. Um, she's going to, Dan Forton's going to get a four-inch line and provide that to us, and then our Public Works folks will bury that line and then cap it on both ends, so if they ever need to utilize that line, uh, they'd be able to do so, but that's, uh, included in that deed, um, when the town, uh, purchased that property. So we're just honoring what that deed has in terms of putting it on the east side of the, uh, the property.
Okay, oh, thank you, all.
Uh, question on that, where, where did you say you're going to locate the pipe?
On the east side of the prop, uh, east side of the property.
Why? Why would anybody?
One, that's where, uh, Ms. Holtz would like the pipe to run through, I confirmed that with her the other day, and then two, that's also where the deed indicates that pipe would go.
Well, that doesn't make any sense whatsoever. You ought to put it over on the other end where the septic system is for the subway. You ought to go through the right-of-way on the west side of the lot, it'll save her a whole lot of money, and she's going to have to get an easement from other property owners to get down to that thing, unless she runs the whole thing under our parking lot, and I wouldn't do that. The agreement was to just run a pipe across of it so she'd get to her property to the south. So, um, why, why would she want to go down there? Uh, I, I have no idea. Doesn't make any sense to me.
I'm just going off of the conversation I had with her, uh, earlier this week. I can reiterate, I'll reiter, I'll reiterate those concerns again to her and, uh, see if her position on it changes.
Zach, is that easement record, is that a sewer pipe easement recorded or on that property? Is that recorded, or is it just a gentleman's agreement?
No, it's actually referenced in the deed, um, itself.
Yeah, I don't believe there was ever an easement. Uh, we didn't draw it up, the town, and I was anxious to purchase the property before mines got changed. So, uh, we agreed that we put a pipe under it. At the time, I wasn't sure where the pipe should be, uh, but when I go out there and look at it, and this is for the subway, and the subway, um, uh, the subway, uh, is up on the west end, and its septic tank, which you discharge from, is right within a few feet of the right-of-way. So why she'd go to all expense, I would assume she is paying for the pipe to go all the way down to the, to the east end of it and then across, rather than just going straight across and be done with it?
Yeah, she's agreed to cover all costs of the pipe.
The, the fact of the matter is, it's not a deal breaker for me. I don't care where she puts the pipe. It was promised to her. I understand Mike's logic in it, though, but, uh, the pipes won't be out of sight, out of mind, so I personally don't care where it's at. I just, you know, that's just my opinion.
Well, I, I, I'd like, I think you ought to really ask her, make her, make sure she understands that, uh, i- is the pipe going down to the east end going to be under our parking lot? Or is she going to get an easement from the?
It would run pursuant to what's in that deed, but it'd be on the eastern side of the property, to the side of the property closest to, uh, town hall. And she has consulted with Dan Forton, you know, who handles a lot of her, uh, septic system, um, components, and that's, I guess, where there was agreement to put it in a four-inch, I believe, a hundred and twenty feet. Um, but I will, I'll double, triple check to make sure that, uh, that that is where she wants it before we put it in.
Okay, I, I, you know, it, it's, it's not very hard for me to see where that needs to go from a common sense standpoint, but, uh, you know, sometimes common sense doesn't rule in these things.
All right, any more comments? All right, and all in favor of the selection of contractor to pave the one oh three Manatee Street? And if you would, please give your name and your vote.
Don Miller, yes.
Jim Nailitz, yes.
Steve Martin, yes.
Jeff Waters, yes.
King, yes.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Next on the list is the selection of contractor for the seawall replacement at Boggs Sound Park.
All righty, so the town of Cape Carteret recently solicited quotes for replacing the seawall at the Boggs Sound Drive Park. The following quotes were received, Harbor Contract Incorporated, twenty-one thousand, nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents, Sea Coast Marine Construction, nine thousand, five hundred, and Norris Marine Construction, eight thousand, eight hundred. Based on the proposal submitted, staff recommends Norris Marine Construction for the seawall replacement project, and the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider selecting Norris Marine Construction as the contractor to complete the seawall replacement project at Boggs Sound Park in Cape Carteret, and to authorize the town manager in consultation with the town attorney to enter into this contract.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Steve, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes.
All right, Mike, go for it.
Um, the only thing I wanted to see in there, in Norris's, um, bid, he, it, the way it read, it sounded like he was going to splice the pipe that drains from the park, and what we need to do, even if we use our town people, I talked to Alex about that. When that pipe goes in, you don't want to splice just back of the seawall, you want to put a new, it's only about twenty feet, that piece of pipe. It would be easy to dig up and put it in right at the time that he is putting in the seawall.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay. I'm good.
Um, I just have one, just one small, uh, comment. Zach, is, uh, once they, uh, Billy does the seawall, and I'm assuming he's leaving the existing wooden seawall in place, is that correct? Uh, and just going out?
Yeah, he leaves the...
Okay, are we, are we responsible for the backfill, and if so, uh, is Alice going to take care of that?
I believe it's included in that price. If not, then we can come up with some film script we have to.
I'm sorry I didn't read, uh, Billy's contract close enough, uh, and once this is done, I would like to see Alex, uh, put a picnic table down there and beautify the, uh, grounds a little bit to make it a, uh, it's a well-used park and, uh, it's probably the most used parking in, uh, Cape Carteret, with the exception of Anita Fort Pier. Certainly is in my name, so, thank you, Zach.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, uh, Mike, go ahead, Don.
I, I just had, I just had a question. Is Norris Construction, is that the ones that put in the, the new pier several years back down in Bay Shore?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so, and the, uh, Anita Fort.
Anita Fort, yeah, okay, okay, that's all I've got.
Okay, Mike.
Now, what, what was interesting is in the quote from, um, Harbor, they're going to take out the old seawall. That is rarely done, because what happens when you pull that thing out, the whole thing's going to slide in, and then you got to dig out on the outside and the front side of it. Uh, Billy's done this before in places, uh, all the docks that I've seen him done, and I think that's the way to do it, just put the new seawall in front of it and backfill behind it. That's all I got.
Okay, any more discussion?
Zach, uh, what's the timetable? So, uh, i- if this is approved, what's the timetable to get this done?
This has to be done by June thirtieth, by the end of fiscal year. So that's the, that's the timeframe, so as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Any more discussion, gentlemen? Okay, without that, I will, uh, ask for all who approve, and once again, give your name and your vote. Start with you again, Don.
Don Miller, yes.
Jim Nailitz, yes.
Steve Martin, yes.
Jeff Waters, yes.
Mike King, yes.
All right, thank you. And last but not least, we have the town hall sidewalks and budget amendments.
All righty, so the Public Works Supervisor and I have been working on a pedestrian improvement plan for the areas around town hall, the community park, and the police department. Uh, we are proposing to construct a sidewalk that connects existing segments of sidewalk to allow people to safely walk through these areas. Uh, the project will involve the installation of a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk, striping crosswalks on existing asphalt areas. And the anticipated project cost, based on the estimates prepared by Public Works, is seven thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, that's with them doing the labor. Basically, that's pretty much concrete and the ADA accessible map. I've got the breakdown here, four thousand, three hundred for the concrete and the boards to form up, um, for the forms. Um, the ADA-approved sidewalk landing path would be one thousand, eight hundred. Uh, the paint and striping and reflective prisms would be one thousand, one hundred. So that brings us to the total project cost of seven thousand, two hundred. And we are requesting a transfer of five thousand, two hundred, twenty-five dollars from the motor vehicle special tax fund and to utilize the existing one thousand, nine hundred, seventy-five, which is in line item twenty-five dot eight eight zero of the Public Works Department budget to cover the seven thousand, two hundred dollar project cost. Um, and I'll pull up the, here's the diagram for the sidewalks, as well as the, um, crosswalk sections that are shown, um, in the white stripes, and here is the budget amendment, um, making the transfer from the motor vehicle special tax funds, uh, and increasing the, um, line item in the Public Works Department. And I also have a map as well, I can pull up if, if needed, that shows a little bit more detail of how this fits into the overall scheme of where the sidewalks are and everything in town. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, that y'all have. Um, one note on the stormwater is that if we're staying below one acre of ground disturbance, we're not required to get a state stormwater permit. The, uh, parking lot located on Manatee Street is all heavily packed, impervious gravel, so that's already impervious surface. Areas that are going to be striped for the crosswalk are already asphalt, so they're impervious. And we're going to utilize the number of existing concrete sidewalk sections, which are, are also, uh, impervious, so there's not going to be a significant amount of ground disturbance and creation of impervious area. The idea behind having the sidewalk that leads to the, uh, new stage would be that, um, for improving ADA accessibility in the park, people would be able to use that sidewalk, um, if they were in a wheelchair, to be able to sit out there for a concert or other event. Um, so that's the thought process is to expand, um, our ADA accessibility and to improve access by doing so.
All right, well, let's entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Steve, do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mike King.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, I have some, go ahead.
I'll beat you, Mike. Uh, Zach, is five foot wide, is that a normal, uh, sidewalk, or, uh, my, I, I thought they were a little nar, more narrow than that. Uh, is that appropriate, is that ADA compliant, or what's, what's the deal on that?
So ADA, ADA is thirty-six inches, that's the minimum. Um, we typically try to do a five-foot sidewalk section. I believe that's what those are along Highway twenty-four, so it would match up with the, the width on the existing sidewalk section.
Okay, I, I will make a couple more comments real quick. Zach, I want to compliment you and, uh, Alex on, on wanting to tackle this, this thing and, and your drawing. I mean, I think it's, I can't stress enough, it's long overdue that we use tap into that MOTV fund. That, that, that tax, uh, was let it on the people several years ago, and I think the language stipulates that we spend a certain amount of that money, or spend that money collected on a yearly basis. It's just been a nest egg sitting there, and I think it's high time that we use it for, to benefit the aesthetics of our town, and I think this is another step in the right direction, and I want to thank you and Alex, uh, Zach. Uh, I think it's just going to be a, if it passes, a tremendous, uh, step forward for our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
I got a couple of questions. Are you going to do the sidewalks in a single pour? Uh...
Ideally, because, ideally we'd do it in one, but it would just depend on our manpower and ability to get all the sections formed up and everything.
I agree with you, and you save a lot on the lumber. I agree with you and you save a lot on the lumber because you can always reuse that, uh, that, um, lumber for another section. You know, in other words, you don't have to buy the total length of it. Uh, two, does it, does this include the sidewalk on, uh, what would be the north side of the parking lot? Which would go right along. You see where those cars are parked there on the north side, it would go just straight in front of that and right over to the h- hard pavement of the, uh, Town Hall. So most of the people come in that way to come to the Town Hall, so they get right on the sidewalk and go into Town Hall. Are you gonna include that in the project?
So there, yeah, there's a sidewalk, there's a spur that leads into that front ramp at Town Hall. And then that would be connected to that, uh, striped crosswalk.
No, I'm, I'm talking, we just talked previously on the paving, okay? Uh, and I mentioned the need for putting a sidewalk on the north side of the, uh, parking lot. You're showing one on the south, but not the north.
Okay, you're talking about the gravel parking lot, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it would, it'd include that for our conversation.
Okay, o- okay. Second of all, um, are you going to, are you gonna pour the sidewalks? So we get a nice transi- pour the sidewalks before they pave the parking lot so they get a nice transition of the parking lot to the sidewalk?
Yeah, ideally we would get the, especially when they're doing that, the lot on Manatee Street is, we would have the sidewalks in first so that the asphalt can be even with the, um, concrete sidewalk. So it's a seamless transition. There's no-
Okay.
Trip hazard.
Okay, uh, and with regard to MOTV, I don't, it's all money, okay? And I don't care whether we use that or any other money. But it seemed to me, I had to ask Sandy for a, uh, a copy of, uh, spending to date. And it looks like, uh, that may even be a moot point. It looks like, uh, revenues are gonna exceed expectations for this year and that when June thirtieth comes, it's gonna be, uh, pretty easy to, we'll have money left over. Uh, is that your read on it too, Zach?
Yes, yeah, I, I think we've, uh, we've been very impressed with our, our revenues this year. So I think we're gonna be in a good financial position to close out the fiscal year. We might have to do a budget amendment to shift the money around, um, and to reflect some of those additional revenues. But, um, overall, I mean, in terms of what we've gotten in, it's, uh, uh, it's been very reassuring that, you know, um, we've been able to generate the amount of funds that we have, um, that we're very fortunate to be able to do that.
Well, I would, uh, thank you for, uh, your discipline and follow up in this. And this is the time to do these kinds of projects. Uh, you know, we've got some money. We don't have to raise taxes to do it. And, uh, we can make this play, you know, this was part, for those who haven't been here, this was part of a project I proposed nine years ago. And it just occurred to me why we don't need the stormwater. We were doing the whole project, uh, at once and it was more than an acre and it required a stormwater permit. But you're, I think, exactly right, being less than an acre, it doesn't require it now. So, everything looks very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Don?
I, I have a question, Zach, just for clarification. The sidewalk that will be running along the south and the east side of the, the new paved parking lot on Manatee Street, that is being included in the project for the paving. This would be putting a sidewalk running down the north side of that parking lot, is that correct?
No, so, so we're handling all of the sidewalks in house. And then the contractor is just doing the asphalt for the parking lot. But ideally, we would start on the, on the sidewalks for that parking lot first. And then that way, when they come out to pave, the sidewalks are all in place and they can pave up to that level. They're putting down two inches of asphalt, so as long as we have the sidewalks at two inches above that existing gravel grade, then we should have a seamless transition.
So, so this project and, and the amount that we're talking about to utilize for it, that will cover the sidewalk, all the sidewalk around that parking lot, which we're gonna pave, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, tha- that's all I've got.
Any, any other discussion? All right, if not, then I'll ask for all in favor. We'll start once again with you, Don.
Don, yes.
Jim Naylitz, yes.
Steve Martin, yes.
Jeff Waters, yes.
Mike King, yes.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. I think that's our business, but I will, uh, just go down the list in case anybody has any comments or anything, uh, they'd like to add at this time. Start with you, Don.
I, I do not have anything. I wanna clarify while we're here is on the exact date and time that we've decided on for our next meeting, which would be the second part of our budget discussion.
Yes, that's gonna be on Monday, June first, at ten o'clock AM.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, you got any comments?
Uh, yeah, I actually, yeah, there was a question. Um, the, um, notice today, I think, that, uh, restaurants, barber shops and hair salons are gonna be open today, is that correct?
Yes, at, at five o'clock.
Uh, somebody asked me the other night, I, I don't know, is the curfew still in effect?
No, that went out when the, we got into the phase, once we went into phase one, we, we tied it to the-
Yes, the, the curfew expi- yeah, the curfew expired, uh, when phase one of Governor Cooper's, uh, plan to reopen NC went into effect. That's how we, we timed it in that, um, proclamation.
Okay, missed, no, I got nothing else.
Thank you, Jim. Steve, you have any comment?
You know, a short comment. I just once again wanna, uh, thank everybody for approving these projects, uh, just a step in the right direction, uh, to finishing some projects we have in town and, and using some MOTV money that's, uh, ta- taxpayer money to do some of these projects. Uh, it's exciting. I hope we can keep the momentum going and, and, um, finish this, uh, Kama project and hopefully the trail. And, uh, I think it does nothing but, um, good for all citizens in our town. And I wanna, uh, wanna ask everybody to remember what, uh, this weekend's all about and, uh, take a few minutes to, to, uh, think about the people that's paid the ultimate sacrifice over the years for our country. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, Steve. Uh, Jeff, Mr. Waters, you have any comments?
Uh, just questioned, uh, are we gonna be having the next meeting, uh, at the Town Hall? We have to do it again on the computers.
Not sure if everybody decided on that June first date, um, what the plan is. Um, open to other, uh, whatever direction the board wants to provide on that.
I'd love to have it in Town Hall.
My personal comment, go ahead, somebody, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, I just said, I'd prefer to have it in Town Hall or, uh, on the stage if weather permits.
Uh, I personally have no intentions of, uh, gathering with anybody outside my, my family. I've been, um, I've been adhering to this stay-at-home order to the T. I've not set foot in a store in two and a half months. Uh, once phase three starts, then, then I'm, I'm fine with it, but not until then.
Uh, this is Mike. Um, one, um, first of all, I was gonna say in my comments that we've gotten pretty good at this, uh, virtual meetings, you know, with the order of provos, everything seems to be working nice. It's very easy for me now. Uh, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Martin on this thing. I have been, uh, pretty much staying out of the limelight except for grocery stores. That's all I, I've been. And I would, I would rather, till we get to the next phase of this thing, I'd rather continue this. Uh, despite it's somewhat awkward, uh, we've done pretty well with it. I'd rather stay with the virtual meetings until, uh, all this threat is, uh, subsided.
I am actually like to meet at the Town Hall as well, uh, as Naylitz has stated earlier. Uh, it's outside, we're not, we're not confined in any small quarters, and so I think it would be a safe environment.
My preference would be to meet in person at Town Hall. However, on that date, I just don't know at this time if I will be back in North Carolina then or not. I hope to, I'm hoping to be back next weekend, but that depends on a couple of things that gotta take place this, this next week. You know, I'm, I'm here in Mississippi trying to get my, take care of my mother and we're trying to get her moved back to North Carolina into assisted living. And that's obviously slowed down with the, the pandemic. And right now, my, my plans are, I'm hoping to be home next weekend, but there's possibility I may be on the road that day or may still be here that day, so.
But Don, the, the first part of your, uh, comment was garbled. When you actually made a pre- stated preference.
Okay, what I was saying, can you hear me now? Okay?
Yeah.
What, I was saying, my, okay, I just said that my preference is, would be to meet in person at Town Hall. But at this time, I don't, based on what I'm doing here in Mississippi, I don't know if I will be back on that Monday or not. I may still be here. I'm hoping to be back next weekend, but that's not a guarantee. I've got a couple of appointments with my mother this next week with a doctor that's gonna determine how quick we can give her move, so.
Zach, I like-
I'm just saying, I may not be, I may not be there.
Z- Zach, I'd like to pull one thing out. I've seen, uh, other municipalities, uh, or it may have been the county that had, uh, some of their commissioners in the boardroom and some, uh, virtual. It was a split. Uh, I, I, I think, you know, people need to respect the concerns for other people's health in this situation and, uh, and that's where I stand on it.
Uh, this is Mike. Uh, do we need a motion on this, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I would just say, let's, uh, let's just plan on the first being virtual right now unless things change. If so, then the Friday before, uh, I'll get with you guys and we'll just do a consensus. How does that sound?
I'm okay with that.
But I personally would also like to, to have these in person, but, you know, there again, I, I, I yield to you guys, uh, being the young buck on the board.
Well, you know what? I, I don't wanna have it in person because I don't want you to see how long my hair is. Um, I haven't had a haircut since January. I, I got Zach beat by a long shot, um, uh, uh, in the hair department. And I'm not going to a barber. Uh, so, anyway, uh, and, and the other thing I had in reference to what Commissioner Martin had said, I had tried to get, uh, a virtual tie-in back when I, years ago, when I was going through a cancer treatment to go from home. And they said I, we, I couldn't do it. I had to be there. Uh, but I, I recognize the situation is much different right now. But I, I would be, I would rather have us all there and do it virtually.
Okay, well, let me backtrack to Jeff to see if, uh, he had any other comments other than, you know, the question about the meeting.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, I think, Mike, did you have anything else you wanna add or?
No, sir.
Well, I'll just say, uh, uh, thank you, gentlemen, for taking your time today. Like I say, uh, it's, uh, different, to say the least, you know, how we're having to handle everything right now, but I think we're doing a great job. And I definitely wanna give a big shout out to our office help ladies. Y'all do an awesome job, uh, dealing with all this. Sheriff, I feel sorry for you, having to come in and right off the bat, uh, go through all this. Hopefully, you know, we can get back to some normalcy at Town Hall and, and get everybody, you know, uh, acclimated to our new environment. Uh, but, uh, once again, it is Memorial Day weekend and, uh, just, uh, wanna, just can't say enough about the, the men and women who gave their lives for this awesome country we live in. And even though we're in a lot of turmoil at this moment, I can't think of a better place to live on this planet than where I'm at right now. Uh, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor, state your name and say bye.
Don Miller, bye.
Jim Naylitz, adios.
Steve Martin, goodbye.
Jeff Waters, have a good day.
Mike King, bye.
Thank you all. Once again, staff, you're all doing an awesome job. Please stay safe out there. Y'all have a wonderful weekend and we'll see you June first, virtually.